Good evening. Welcome to this work session of the City of Kingman Council on Tuesday, December 17, 2019 at 5:00 PM. We have local please.
Mayor Miles.
Here.
Vice Mayor Leonfeldter.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Councilmember Mello Keener.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Present.
Councilmember Watkins.
Here.
Councilmember Wade. We have a gorm. Thank you. Thank you. This evening, we have a work session meeting, and all work session items listed are for discussion only. No action can or will be taken. The primary purpose of work session meetings is to provide the city council with the opportunity for in-depth discussion and study of specific subjects. Public comment is not provided for on the agenda and may be made only as approved by consensus of the council. In appropriate circumstances, a brief presentation may be permitted by a member of the public or another interested party on an agenda item if invited by the mayor or city manager to do so. The mayor may limit or end the time for such presentations. Tonight, we have one topic which we're going to listen to Director Kellogg speak on the Economic Development Strategic Master Plan update. Mr. Kellogg.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. We started this before. We got into it a little bit. Mayor, I should run about 59 minutes. I'm just kidding. Just kidding.
It's about what I expected.
Yeah. Feel free to shoot me, please. Okay, I'm just going to walk you briefly through. We got through, I believe, about the first 10 slides before. So again, this is the economic development plan as that was developed, and so we'll talk about it, laying the foundation. And again, I just want to reiterate this a little bit. On September 17, the Agreement for Professional Services. Then in October, the council voted to delay the project until we brought on an ED manager and the new city manager arrived. And as you can see, that's how the calendar progressed. And on January 1 of 18, the ED plan was completed and approved. The overview, the plan was a culmination of a collaborative endeavor to identify the City of Kingman's assets and challenges and create a strategy for mitigating challenges and taking advantage of opportunities. So there are 25 different strategies that I'll be reviewing this evening with you. And so I'll just kind of, what I'll do is be telling you a little bit about what the strategy was, what they identified, and what our action plan is doing, and in some cases, even since our last meeting, able to update on some of the things that have been accomplished. Okay, adopt a city vision and economic development goals. The Economic Development Department worked with the Advisory Commission, and we came up with our mission statement and our goals. Again, our mission is to enrich the area's economic, create a high-paying quality jobs, foster development of trained workforce, expand the industrial base, and enhance economic development associated with tourism, and increase the per capita income and improve the quality of life for Kingman residents. A little bit wordy, but a goal that we felt that we really could get accomplished. Now, the ED commission is recommending the following vision statement, and again, I'll just let you look it over real quick. I think one of the most important parts of this is really kind of the last sentence, and that is the development of the historic business district and a vibrant downtown. This is certainly one of the keys that came into play when this whole thing was looked at. Goals. Commission has recommended the following goals. Again, I'll just let you take a quick look at that. Actually, it's just a brief update. We had a great meeting with the Mexican consulate last Friday, so some of those things are already starting to be realized to push it beyond even a state and even into a, to an international type of level, so. Establish and empower action teams for the strategy. The staff has agendized Strategy 2 in the upcoming EDA Commission, and discussions will include reports to the ED Commission outlining the accomplishments and challenges, and this has been reviewed with them, publicity to promote tasks accomplished and resources, mobilization and program implementation, create action teams with various timelines and milestones and the task assignments within the commission itself. Strengthening the communication with the community. Staff will be coordinating this effort with the city manager and our public information officer. Some of these steps have already been taken. Leadership and team building training for economic development. The ED planning department will, the ED and planning department will have or has budgeted to create the following opportunities. I reviewed these with you last time. We wanted to make sure that we were including commissioners, certainly as we work closely with Main Street and stuff, to make sure that our commissions understand what we were doing and give them an opportunity, including we've already set up for our ICS visit in Las Vegas coming up in 2020. And then again, one of the things that we've extended now are the governors and the tourism conferences, so that again, the commissioners and especially the chairs are, can be a part of that. Improve the first impressions by eliminating neglected properties. The newly formed Code Enforcement Committee will have an opportunity to review this strategy. The committee members are from public works, fire, building, safety, planning and zoning. And so we will begin to start to take these steps, but this was again, was outlined by Chaven as one of the things that we needed to do as a community. Update the zoning and development codes. Again, as you all know, the Lisa Wise firm, a consulting firm, was hired. The new zoning ordinance is already to be completed by December 20 of 2020. This is moving right along. We met again last week and had a very lengthy meeting with the consultants, and this thing is going quite well. Gary Lignis, our newest member of the planning team, has been brought up to speed, so his input is valued there, too. Increase the, stabilize the city's revenue sources. Again, a lot of this certainly lies with both in, with us as management and certainly with you as a city council, as you begin to address this, considering established mechanisms that capture revenue, property taxes, et cetera. A commission to study determine the potential revenue under different options and determine the optimum solution for Kingman and get those type of things implemented. So that's something that certainly we can be a part of, but a lot of that will certainly be how we share that with the public and the things that you all encourage that we need to go forward with. Expand the staff and supplement the economic development and marketing budget. We've hired an administrative coordinator at the industrial park that works for both Bennett and Steve out there, and an economic development manager specializing in commercial and retail, and that's Sylvia Schaefer. And she's already, even though she is transitioning from planning, she's already deeply involved with that transition. The branding contract was awarded to Gio and Associates. Last week, you participated in the first set of meetings. There were eight meetings altogether. Gio and Associates, we had a wrap-up meeting myself and with them, and they will be bringing back to us an updated version of everything that's kind of taken place, where we are with the process, how the interviews went, and so that'll be presented to you on, I believe, January 7. So they are ready to get that prepared for us. We've hired a retail consultant specialist, and that is actually completed now. And so starting January 1, Sylvia will be working with them, and we will be working to make sure that how we're going to go after the retail market. The aviation consultant has also been hired since we put this together, and so we'll be moving forward on our ability to attract to the business park on the aviation side. Again, I think what I emphasized before is because we are a small team, we have gone out and hired these specialties to assist us, you know, in doing this work so that we don't drop the ball. Strategy 9, implement a business and retention expansion program. It's completed and ongoing actions. Staff created a database of the traded sector, employees at the airport industrial park, contact information, product and services, employment levels and skills. We set up a visitation to meet personally with these folks, and so that, as you all know, has gone extremely well. We've been able to, I think I mentioned to you last time, been able to help, and actually when another company was bought out out there, we acted as on budsman to help them through the permitting process, both at the county and the city level, and that went extremely well. And so they keep the phone open to us all the time. Making necessary referrals to partner agencies, so we certainly work closely with Tammy at the county, and we also work very closely with the community college in their small business area. Ongoing follow-up to ensure the employees are satisfied. Staff is looking into a compensation survey analysis, and so I know that Bennett and I are working on that as we speak. Strengthen the economic development team. Kingman can make a difference by going beyond telling the prospects about their resources, but also showing exactly how they can benefit by having ready case studies, testimonials, et cetera. So what we've done is designed and published a marketing document for the Kingman Industrial Park with testimonials and operational costs. We have a data-rich website which details our program information. We created an opportunity zone prospectus, and we continue to use that as a marketing tool. Our partners there were both from the county and from the Chamber of Commerce and from the private sector. And we created an economic impact study in the business and the partnership with Mojave County on the park. And I think that the results from that really have shown us locally. So when folks ask you, you know, what does the park and how does it affect us, we have those numbers, you know? We see what that employment base is. We see what those, what that money brings to the community. Prepare Kingman's industrial real estate. We've worked with the local developers and brokers. This is what define the real estate requirements for targeted industries at a first step in Kingman's investment strategy. We've set up a property locator tool with our new choosekingman.com website. We became an associate member of the local Golden, Kingman and Golden Valley Association of Realtors. This is growing and going to become a more and more important partnership to us, and I believe we will have addressed our first Realtor, having brought us a client to the park, and being able to reimburse them, saying, you know, so that there is something, there's skin in the game for them, too. So I kind of look at the real estate community as just an extension of us, okay? We participated in Keller Williams, and it was called Jedi Training, and this real estate, they invited us over, and what Bennett and I were able to do there was really talk to a bunch of young, up-and-coming Realtors, and there was a lot of great questions and a lot of good feedback for us. And so we certainly have opened that up to talking to anyone in the real estate community. And also, we want to, as an active member, as an associate member, we certainly can help with that. We will be discussing economic development with the real estate agents now and in the future, so I know we got a call from Councilman Nelson or an email asking about what we might be able to do and look at speakers, and so we're able to plug us in for economic development. We can plug in a tourism piece. We have the historical background on the airport, which is nice for people to know about, so I think we can really play an even more active role in, you know, getting our story out, but also helping them at the same time, and in turn, I guess, really helping ourselves. Prepare Kingman's industrial real estate. Work with the city utilities, electric, gas, internet-to-map utilities at the Kingman Industrial Park. Bennett and I have been meeting regularly now with the BSNF people on the rail, and I think I had mentioned that last time, that they had brought out one of their director-level persons, so we are now part of their marketing program. So there is another major partner. We did, we took them on an in-depth tour of the park, shared a lot of information, and so their gentleman, both of them came away. The one fellow, Peter, we work with a lot, but the new guy on the ED side is from the Midwest, and so he got to see what Kingman was really all about. So we incorporated a secondary airport industrial access road, the project, we're involved with that, making sure that the voice is heard, that how important that interchange was, it certainly is to the park. And we're currently finishing up, we're working, we're about halfway through it, really the 10-year airport master plan, and then the Phase 1 land release. Again, you guys, what I suspect is that we're probably about eight to nine months on the release, we should begin to really see some of the fruits of our labors there. But that'll be just the beginning, because then it'll be the infrastructure, so. I've joined the Mojave-Lapaz County Workforce Development Board. We met again today as we're getting set for everything that they need to do on an annual basis. Bennett and I will participate in the MCC Advisory Council, and we've been on that first meeting. We are partnering with AAD, and we did host, as you all know, the Rural Roundtable, and folks had a great time here, and the speaker was Trevor Stokes. What I want to share with you today at the, when I attended the workforce development thing at the county, they can't say enough about the Trevor's report, because that was really important to them. And so they, that'll become an integral part of, as you know, Mayor, working with them at the annual stuff that they have to do. So I just told them, thank you. You're welcome. They've been hired, and that report is now out in everybody's hands, and it basically is a strategic recommendation for the region's talent development and ecosystem. So I think the nice part about working with a guy like him is that he just has a handle on so many things, so he brought a lot of great stuff to the table, so. And Bennett just informed me before the meeting that Trevor has already gotten back to us with the updates since the public meeting that we had here and the AAD meeting, and so we now have the final, the final draft is done, so, and we'll share that appropriately. Grow the talent pipeline with skills that will support Kingman's economic future. The advanced manufacturing education workforce development. I think the big thing there is those meetings have already started, and the big thing is looking for educational pathways through the Northern Arizona University and MCC. The high schools, although initially were not part of this, they will be included. Our next tentative meeting will be set up for January 15, 2020, so we will announce where and when on that one. We have the when, it's just not the where yet. We're working on the where. Okay. Thank you. Implement a focused, well-funded marketing and business attraction program that is supported with the necessary data, tools and material. And so again, their charge to us was create Kingman's value proposition and the key messages on the platform that answers that question. Why my business should locate in Kingman instead of anywhere else. The retail consultant specialist has been hired now, and that'll kick in on January 1. The aviation consultant is hired, that'll kick in on January 1. The one-sheet documents for the Kingman Industrial Park have been completed, so we have the data sheets to back that up. Strategy 13, implement a focused and well-funded marketing and business attraction program that is supported, okay? Ongoing there is the two new comprehensive websites, and that is Choose Kingman and choosekingmandata.com. We just met recently, in the last week, met with the consultants that helped us put that together, and we have some additional updates that are now going to be coming into the website that will make it even richer. So we're really excited about that. We are in the process of creating an airport website, and I believe we're probably maybe a little over half done with that, so we'll be ready to go probably in February or March, and have that all ready to go. Okay, we create the printed and electronic materials to support Kingman's messaging and marketing efforts. Some of these documents have already been created, and again, everything is accessible on our choosekingman.com website. Identify key locations and spaces to be prioritized for marketing, and we have reached out to a major commercial property owners to identify vacancies and then implement the property search tool. And again, this is available on both choosekingman.com and choosekingmandata.com. Assess the condition readiness of the marketability of properties. We are currently working with the property owners to assess the conditions of each of these sites to identify the best tactics for moving forward. Prioritize the properties based on readiness, best options. This will take place both on our industrial side and our commercial side, so that's where Sylvia will really be focusing her attention. Identify the target businesses, prospects suitable for each location. We will collaborate with the retail consultant, because the particular firm we chose is very, very good at this. And that was one of our priorities when we looked at hiring them. Coordinate marketing communications to targeted audiences. Actions to hold quarterly commercial, and these are all things that we are in the process or will be doing. Hold quarterly commercial broker breakfast roundtables with the top 10 most active commercial brokers in the Kingman area, and again, become an active sponsor in the Kingman and Golden Valley Association of Realtors breakfast meetings. These are areas where we can spend a little bit of money, but again, we have a, when you feed them, you got them captive, so it's kind of works nice that way. Am I right, Councilman Nelson? Yeah. Discuss the key properties they represent, and the best message to share the information. Again, they certainly are all aware of the fact that they can post on our website, so that they certainly have that tool there. Identify the top projects for new and redevelopment that may be opportunities for the public-private collaboration, and again, discuss that with the Realtors Association. Provide a broker and a packet. This is something that we really want to work on, too, is provide a broker pack including fact sheets, data, status of interchange projects, so that they again have something in their hands to use. Okay, engage all key partners and the shopping center managers and the area brokers and Chamber of Commerce, Main Street, SBDC, and that's through the community college. We have, and we have open discussions with the SBDC to have their host franchise networking events with key partners. You're already seeing the SBC certainly active in the downtown. They're already reaching out to helping some of the, certainly the small businesses and the entrepreneurs who really need some of that expertise. And we will, trying to set up in January now, a lunch and learn mainly for, certainly for the staff that works with me and some other key folks in the city, to really find out everything that SBDC brings to the table, so that when we talk, we know and it's easy to reference. Yes, they can do this, no, they can't, but we will know. So they're excited about it, and so are we. Continue communication and information sharing between meetings to ensure that there is ongoing collaboration and consistent messaging. One of the things that happened at the last Economic Development Advisory Commission is they looked and wanted to reestablish meeting on a monthly basis, so they felt the information was coming fast and furious, and so they will have updates, you know, certainly much quicker, at least certainly on a monthly basis. But we continually meet with the chamber, and like I said, and certainly the Realtors. Again, this is some of the things that Sylvia will be busy with, to meet annually with the city's top 20 retail sales generators, and so we are putting that together now. Meet quarterly with the shopping center managers, again, so that we know what properties are available, what they have, and certainly how can we help. We will facilitate this action with scheduled phone calls to certainly discuss the trends. Make any necessary referrals to partner agencies, and then a follow-up to ensure that the employer is satisfied, existing routine practices with our list of employer contacts, so that's really going to help with certainly the expansion of the team with Sylvia. Cultivate a strong entrepreneurial ecosystem. This is something that I think we've seen happen around us, and I think it's our time to start really moving ahead with this, to form a Kingman's entrepreneurial network of young entrepreneurs group to offer a range of technical assistance. One of the things that we saw in Trevor's report was the amount of small businesses and what it represents in our community, and these are entrepreneurs, and quite often, some of them, you know, they start the business, it's well-meaning, they have a great product, they got a great idea, but you ask them a question like, well, how much money's in the checking account? Well, I got enough to pay the bills, but what they really need maybe is help in the business planning area, you know, or a marketing plan or that type of thing. So that's where we will hold hands with MCC and specifically the SBDC. Periodically conduct a shopper opinion survey, and these are things that are good for us to do. We did one not too long ago with the city in general, looking for what were the stores that people were interested in, so that's one of the lists that we're operating off of now. It'll be one of the tools that we'll use when we go to the ICSC conference in Vegas this May. Also, too, one of the things is, the consultants, is one of the questions we ask of all of our consultants is their look and use of agreeing to us best practices because of their exposure, and so rather than us reinvent the wheel, we really are going to lean on them for that. Active, pursue the retail attraction. Prepare a commercial marketing campaign for specific properties or target businesses. This, again, we will be working with our consultant. He's very much aware of what we're requesting here and has already started to work on that, and then again, work closely with the brokers on designing and implementing effective strategies to promote Kingman as a regional shopping destination. Formalize the Main Street organization. Acts and recommendations. Number one, I know that's near and dear, Councilman Staley, to you, hire an Arizona Main Street consultant to create a funding plan and develop a work plan for the organization. And so we are currently working with and hopefully getting closer with a Vista program to bring someone on board to really help Main Street and guide the process. So again, we will provide the office space, we will provide the oversight on management so that they don't have to wander or flounder out there, so we'll make sure that they're taken care of there. So fact is, those offices are just about, I don't know if they're complete, Josh, but they're getting close. Yeah, so we're looking at having them ready about the 15th of January, no later than that, so, in the powerhouse. Branding, okay? Well, there's, I can really just tell you that we really are getting really close there. We'll have that information for you, and I'll report back on January 7 on the results of those meetings. Other comments, future steps, step up the meeting of the implementation team, and then this is the resources that we're committed to that whole project. Consolidate the tourism marketing initiatives. This is one of the things that Kaufman really saw, what that is, prepare a three-year Kingman visitor marketing plan with funding commitments and detail, et cetera. So one of the things I wanted to let you know about is that I just got an update from Josh today, and that we have subscribed to WW Destination Development Organization for continuing education purposes. And again, this is something that's really important to us, as we train our team members and reach out certainly to the other organizations that tourism affects so greatly. And so one of the things that I wanted to let you know here on 22 is what we've done, too, is also consider the training of all frontline employees and guests in the Kingman and the retail and the hotel business, the museum and other destination attractions. So there is a survey instrument that has been distributed to our hospitality partners, and we will now follow up with personal visits. So, because one of the things that we think we need to really work on, too, and that is, you know, how you treat them when they come, the information that you provide to them. And so one of the things that we're looking at is that we know our sister city down there, Lake Havasu, has a program, and one of the things we don't need to do is maybe need to reinvent that wheel, but this is training that's provided community-wide to folks who have that contact, because quite often, as you all know, it can be a hotel person who checks you in at the desk, it could be that waitress at a restaurant, and if they can answer the question, what is there to do in Kingman, and they can maybe do it, doesn't have to be complicated, just fairly easy, or what other things can we do, or where to go from here on these things. This is part of what we will certainly look to do that. So again, we are looking at making sure in our 2021 budget that we put some money aside to help with that program. Each year, visit the top 10 to 15 hotel properties, and tourism will collaborate with the city and the county economic development team to utilize. They have that BRE program to survey the hotels, and the survey results will be brought back to our EDAC for their review and input. Again, another great tool to certainly help them and us understand the visitor. Continue to implement the 2003 Kingman Wayfinding Plan. Again, I think part of this will really start to him on what do we find out after we get those first results, you know, from the branding? What's the next step, okay? And 25, identify the top five visitor infrastructure projects to be, to move forward on. And 25, identify the top five visitor infrastructure projects to be, to move forward on. Certainly is to complete the away finding and directional signage program, develop a visitor information kiosk in, in several high-foot traffic locations. We're written, working closely with Main Street on that. We worked with them on their, the city map and, and one of the other kiosks. So we will be certainly working with them. We also have, we don't have the solution yet, but we're, they've asked about the libraries, the small book things. So we're trying to develop where would they be safe and how, how would they be, how, how can we help in that process? I know this is being looked at and that's developed bus and RV parking facilities. The bus people have told us that they will come to our downtown, but they have to have a dedicated bus parking spot. They will not try to negotiate, you know, into some parking space that may or may not be there or may not fit their needs as a bus driver. So I know that we're working on that right now. And then maintain and update the powerhouse as a central visitors information center. Continue with the enhancements. We had some, one of the committees from the EDAC that, that Josh and I met with, we picked up a number of, of ideas, had quite a nice exchange. And so there's some things that came out of that meeting that we've already implemented and some of the things that we're going to be looking at. There's some ways that we have, have discovered too of counting visitors. And you can do this through, it's not a facial recognition, but it's a similar type of program, but it'll help us understand who comes into the gift shop, who comes to the, using the restroom, that type of thing. We also looked at some other touchscreen applications that we think that we can pick up from and, and really make work. And then the look at the providing a shuttle bus or trolley from the powerhouse to the downtown, the feasibility and, and what it would take to fund that, so. Identify the, the top five visitor infrastructure projects. Again, we have completed and we have an EV charging station that right now that's in service and it'll handle two vehicles. This station also has the ability, we can kind of see what's going on there too, but we also put a camera in that area so we make sure that we, we monitor that. We added the features of the neon to the arch and I hope everybody is happy with that. So that turned out really well. And if you like that, you're going to love the new entrance sign to the powerhouse. I know I touted a lot, but it's so retro, it'll just, it'll make Mr. D's jealous, okay? Not jealous, but at least they'll say it'll be complimentary anyway, so. And then working on the, the kiosk and stuff. And then the, like I said, the entry sign. And then, and by the way, on the entry sign to the powerhouse, it's now in, the engineering's being completed and the design work. So one of the things we found out, we thought we could use that big pole that was already in the ground, but it turns out that it really won't. But that's also, we found out there's an awful lot of utility congestion right in that area underground, so we have to be really careful. So Public Works has already come out, they've identified things that have to watch for. So before we put any, drill any holes in the ground, let me assure you, Blue Steak will be well-informed and so will we, so whatnot to hit. Cause there's a fire hydrant, a number of things there that it has to be moved. And then we will start work then on the, on the drive-through arch. And so, and just to let you know on the entry sign, certainly part of the funding will come from us, part of the funding will come from Route 66, and part of it'll come from the insurance company, from the lady that took out the original sign. So, so it's, it's not just bearing on us. So yeah, so we've started that, that claim work already. And we're excited certainly about the, the 66 arch. And we've asked that the design be in such that we don't want it to be like anybody else's. So again, I think it's probably going to be that nice retro look, stuff like that. So some combination probably certainly of, of neon and LED. Because as you guys know, on the arch, those shields now can be made any color we want. And so you're currently seeing green shields on the 66 shield there. So breast cancer week, they're pink, so we can do the full spectrum of, of colors on With that, I will open it up to any questions you might have, but that's really kind of, I wouldn't say in a nutshell, but it's, there's a lot of work. And again, I really want to take my hat off to, to the team that supports me. It's Bennett, Sylvia, you know, Josh, you know, Steve out at the airport and, and the planning and zoning folks and Sandy. Everybody has, has really had the input on this and, and really helped a lot with, with getting this thing going. So my hat's certainly off, I couldn't do it without them, so.
Really impressive. Thank you so much. Are there any questions or comments? Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, this is beyond my expectations and I want to thank you and your team for this. We needed all of these things and it's so wonderful to see, see everything happening so quickly. The question I wanted to ask about was the making Kingman more inviting when you get off the freeway. And we've kind of talked about this before, but I, I'd like to know a little bit about what our plans are in the next year and if we're, if we're going to be, if you're going to be asking in the budget process for additional funds to redo those off ramps. They are much cleaner than they used to be, but they could still use probably some rock and plants and, you know, I mean, they, they still need more work to really make it look like this is a safe, clean place to stop and shop and eat.
I'll be happy to take that.
Our city manager, I know he's been working closely.
So I've been working on that a lot. And just actually as of today, working on kind of what the budget should look like for that. And so the things that we are currently, we have permission from ADOT to be able to do monument signs in the right of ways on, on and the on-ramps and off-ramp sides of all the interchanges. So that's, that's done. And so one of the things that we've been, one of the reasons why something hasn't already happened on that is because we're waiting for our branding exercise to get done so that we are incorporating the new brand in, in those efforts. So it will be in the next fiscal year that we will tackle those projects. And it's going to be a combination of monument signs and landscaping around those monument signs. What we're hoping for is obviously we have very large traffic interchanges in this community, three very big ones. And knowing that we don't have enough money to do, you know, all of them, we, we do have a commitment from ADOT to give us some rock that we were going to try to spread between Route 66 interchange and Stockton Hill Road interchange. We've since changed that to, I think we're going to concentrate that rock at Stockton Hill. But looking to put monument signs on, as many as we can, both on and off at all three interchanges. The other thing that we're looking at is also messaging signs, some LED messaging signs that have that new brand that communicate to the, to, to the community and create nicer visual aspects that, you know, that just can be updated and modernized and get messages out to people. So it's kind of a combination thereof. And so we're just in the process of trying to figure out, and what are those going to cost? And how much landscaping should we do? Obviously, we need to stay ahead of the weeds, but beyond that, it, it's probably not feasible to do a bunch of rock work, but we can around the monument signs. And so that's, that's what we're working on. The budget for 2021, we'll have a proposal for all those aspects that I just described. And depending on how much it is, it may be, we may be suggesting a phased project or we may be able to do it all. But that, that will be in the 2021 budget.
Councilman, if I could just update one other thing. Several months ago, Scott Dutton, the county officials, the county Public Works and ADOT and myself, we had a, a meeting and we actually drove the, all the entrance points to the city. And the concern there was, is the lack of identification of Route 66. And that is that this historic Route 66. The signs are kind of gunky and then everybody goes, gets off and what does Shinnarump Road really mean? Doesn't mean anything, maybe just us locally, but that is Route 66. And so the latest report that I've gotten back from that group is that they started out with, it was going to cost about $85,000 to $100,000 to redo these signs. And then ADOT came back and the price is now down to I think like 35. And so then the county manager was in part of that group, has then taken that to the county. And so I think right now, from what I understand is we're kind of waiting on ADOT for some final clearances. But I think for a very small amount of money, we can get folks back onto Route 66. And so what I liked about that one, it was, it was the city, the private sector and the county and, and ADOT. So it was nice that we did it. So the pressure stays on, cause I, I get regular emails from, from Scott on a regular basis.
Good.
He's the right guy to push the button. So you know, just keep egging him along, but so we, we made sure we're, we're staying in touch.
That's great news. Thank you both.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just three things really. The first thing I want to just kind of point out, I want to congratulate Manager Foggan and our Economic Development Team. When you look at our Economic Development function, it's, there's no doubt that we have the strongest Economic Development function in the, in the whole county and it's still a very new department. So that just shows that there's been so much work that's gone on in a very, very small span of time. And I just want to congratulate you guys. You guys are doing a great job. The second thing I wanted to know, you mentioned both a retail specialist and an aviation firm, but I didn't hear the names. And I just wanted to know if you could, you could mention those names to us?
I can't, I'm sorry, I don't.
The retail, the retail specialist and the aviation firm that has been hired, they were, I didn't see the names of those firms.
Aviation consultant is.
I didn't write it down.
It's aviation, their, their name is actually Aviation Marketing Consultants.
Okay.
So it's actually in their name is Aviation Marketing. The, the retail is, I believe that is Sylvia, and it is Retail Specialists.
Okay, great.
Retail Specialists.
Great, thank you. And then the last thing I wanted to mention, when you talked about the Business Attraction Program, I know that we just had a visit from the Mexican consulate and that went very well. You know, I think that the tours that you guys do out there are a great job. I mean, you can't really understand or wrap your brain around what Kingman has to offer until you really see it with your own eyes. And, and it went really well. I'd like to see in, in the next budget session, or trade visits. I know that the Arizona Commerce Authority, they put together a group of cities, maybe they partner with GPEC, I'm not sure if they do or not. But they do a trade visit down to Mexico, they do a trade visit up to Canada. And as we look at it ourselves as a future hub, a regional hub, an international hub perhaps, that'd be a great, a great thing to, to keep building on. One of the key takeaways that I, I thought from that consulate visit, which was really good, almost an all-day visit, was they were, you know, any, any, any help that we need with, if we go with the Skybridge North model, they're the ones that are going to help us with onsite customs processing. They've helped the original Skybridge and so it was just a good, a good meeting. So all in all, just keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you. They, they also said they would be supplying us, me via email, a lot of those details and stuff too. And also, you know, they talked a little bit about the Sister City program, which is, you know, something we can consider, but considering everything else on the plate, that can probably wait a little bit.
Right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Well, I just echo the thanks to Manager Foggan and all of you. It is remarkable how much progress has been made in a very short time.
Thank you.
And we have a long way to go, but we're well on our way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that was our one topic for this evening. So given that, I am going to adjourn this meeting and we will reconvene at 6 o'clock for our business meeting, regular meeting. Good evening, and welcome to the regular meeting of the City of Kingman Common Council on Tuesday, December 17th at 6:00 PM. Could we have roll call, please?
Mayor Miles.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lienfelder.
Here.
Councilmember Melo Keener.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Present.
Councilmember Watkins.
Here.
Councilmember Wade.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Could we please stand for the invocation?
Mayor, just really quick before we get into the meeting itself, if you would just, I just want to remind everybody, we have new microphones, they're longer, should be easier on your back, so, but please make sure they're on when you're speaking, off when you're not speaking, and that you speak into them. We've, we've done a much better job, people have said that they're being able to follow our meetings much easier, and so your cooperation on that is much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm close, here, right here. Stand for the invocation by Father Leonard Walker of the Kingman Catholic Church, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
As we celebrate the gift of love become flesh and blood in Jesus Christ, we pray to you, Creator of life, to send your Spirit of wisdom to guide these, our city leaders. Fill them with wonder of your light to dispel the darkness of pride and division. Grant them the courage to follow their conscience for the good of all, with preference to the poor, weak, and defenseless. May their deliberations and decisions build up our community to be a light on the hill that shows forth your justice and peace. Thank you for this opportunity, and have a very blessed and merry Christmas, and hopefully happy holidays. Thank you.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 3843103A3 to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating thereto. This evening, our first topic is one of appointments, and our first appointment is for the Historic Preservation Commission, and the city's Historic Preservation Commission currently has two vacancies. Mr. Mike Blair of Kingman has completed an application, and at their regular meeting on November 26, 2019, the Historic Preservation Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval. This term will expire on March 30th, 2022, and staff recommends appointment of Mike Blair. Is Mr. Blair here this evening? No, okay, is the, who's the liaison to historic, is that you?
That would be me, yep. I was at the meeting. I'll go ahead and make a motion to appoint Mr. Mike Blair to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second to appoint Mike Blair to the Historic Preservation Commission. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it, passes unanimously. Second, we have the Clean City Commission appointments. The terms of Chairman C. Russell, Commissioners Kathy Bowman, and Nikki Sawaya all expire in December of 2019, and all three members have expressed a desire to be reappointed. The reappointments of Chairman Russell and Commissioner Sawaya, I know I may not be pronouncing that correctly, Sawaya, will require a supermajority vote of the common council. Commissioner Regina Garcia has submitted her resignation from the commission on October 18th. Her term will expire in December of 2022. One new talent bank application for the Clean City Commission has been received from Teresa Woods. Staff recommends one, reappointment of Commissioners C. Russell and Nikki Sawaya, and two, reappointment of Commissioner Kathy Bowman, and three, appointment of Teresa Woods to fulfill the remainder of Commissioner Garcia's term. Okay, the candidates are all here. Would you like to address the council, any of you? C. Russell, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, staff, and council members. I've been doing this now for, since 2014, I believe, is when I started all of this, and been chair now for a term, and I'm more than happy to do it again if you can put up with me. It's fun to work with the community. I feel if a person has anything to say, they need to get involved, and getting involved can be a whole lot more fun, as well as, what's the word, feeling accomplishment in what you do. And so, I would be more than happy to do another term. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Teresa Woods, is she here? That's okay. Would you like to at least say hello to the council, express your...
Hi, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilman. I'm, have been following the Clean City Commission for a few months, well, quite a few months, and I just, I've been in Kingman 25 years, and I just wanted to get involved because I didn't hear a lot about that commission. And so, I wanted to try to help spread the word and do my best to feel accomplished, as I said. So, that's why I apply.
Thank you so much for your application. We appreciate it. And for the three that are willing to stay on, thank you for all you're doing. You're making a huge difference, and you are doing some fun projects in the community, so we really appreciate it. Who is the Clean City Commissioner?
I am.
Okay, counselor. Would you like to have any comments?
I agree with all these, great citizens should be appointed, or all reappointed. I think they're doing a good job, and it's a fun commission to be on.
Then will you make a motion?
I can make a motion, too. That's what you're waiting for. I motion that we recommend the reappointment of Commissioner C. Russell and Nikki Sawaya, and number two, reappointment of Commissioner Kathy Bowman, and then number three, appointment of Teresa Woods to fulfill the remainder of Commissioner Garcia's term.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to appoint these, appoint or reappoint these four people to the Clean City Commission. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Next, we have the Planning and Zoning Commission appointments. The terms of commission members Laurie DeVry and Vicky Kress will end on December 31st, 2019. While eligible for reappointment, both commissioners have indicated to staff their intent to step down and not seek reappointment. There are four applications for persons interested in serving on the Planning and Zoning Commission. These applicants include Marlin Christopher Cox, Jason Marino, Marcus Nelson, and Jed Noble. Staff recommends council appoint two of the applicants to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Who's the liaison, is that?
That would be me.
That's you. Well, first, let's see if there, are any of those candidates here, and would you like to address, okay, Mr. Cox?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. I'm here, I appreciate you for taking the time to listen to me talk about what I would bring to this job and this community. If you have my application, you've already read it, you should understand what's on it, and I know you do. If you have any questions for me, please be free to ask. I'd be more than happy to answer whatever you need.
Okay, Counselor, Staley, did you, oh, you say you don't have, okay, and so you...
I've been here 15 years.
15 years.
And I worked for Mojave County as a building inspector, and also worked in the zoning and planning division there as well, while I was there for eight years. So, and another, I've been in construction business about 30 years, 35 years. So, I do have a lot to bring to this.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Are there any other candidates for this, that, all four of them are here? Okay, would, would Mr. Nelson like to come up and speak?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Kind of new at this, so, not completely politically correct. I understand since the last time I applied, the pay is the same as what it was last time, and so it's a privilege to be part of this. I do know a few of you folks here, and kind of looking at the slates of people applying, I don't think you're going to go wrong. think you're going to go wrong regardless of who you pick. I've been part of Kingman since 1967 and I've seen Kingman grow a lot. I've seen a lot of good things happen to it. I've seen a lot of bad things happen. Right now, I'm seeing good things happen. I'm really happy to be part of it. Just wanted to introduce myself. If you have any questions, obviously, be happy. I own a business here, been for 40 years. So, I'm trying to be, I'm getting to be, I'm getting to be part of the community.
Thank you so much. Okay, Jason Marino or Jed Noble?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, staff. How's everybody doing? So, glad to be here. I applied for the commission because I really wanted to be able to bring some diverse experiences to the table. I'm well-traveled. I've lived around the country and spent the last 14 years living in Kingman. I have a background in design and it's led me to a career in business and in visual arts. And I feel that that's a really powerful tool to have on a commission such as this because it's very much a visual job, more so than just, you know, data and technical things. It all could be very visual. So, I hope that's, I think that's a diverse thing to bring to the table. I'm good at bringing people together and reaching across the aisle and helping to come to agreements with people. I'm able to mix in different socioeconomic environments with people, which is very helpful as a tool as well. And I'm an active charitable member of this community and I feel like it's really time for me to take that to another level and get truly involved on that type of deep level. And I'm very excited to contribute to the growth of Kingman and stabilization and anything it needs and really looking forward to helping out. And I'm quite tall. So, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Noble?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Jed Noble. I'm a civil engineer and I regularly use the city ordinances and regulations that the P&amp;Z Commission takes under consideration and actually apply those to, you know, real-life examples. So, I think I'd be a valuable member of the P&amp;Z Commission. So, if you guys have any questions.
Thank you very much. We are going to use the ballot that the city clerk has given us to have a vote. Each person can select two. But before we do, councillor Nelson, did you want to make any comments regarding this? Good. That is good. Thank you. Okay, so let's go ahead, make your vote, and just pass it down. And then we'll take a moment and let the city clerk tally. Well, she's doing that. I would like to thank Laurie De Vries and Vicki Kress for their service. I know both of them have given a number of years to the city and we really appreciate them serving in that capacity.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
We have four votes for Marlin Christopher Cox, four votes for Jason Marino, and six votes for Jed Noble.
So, we have a tie. So, Jed Noble is appointed and it appears that we need another ballot. So, if you, so perhaps you have some paper, you can just quickly give us a ballot. So, it was, the choices were Marlin Christopher Cox or Jason Marino. Is that correct? Okay, well, you'll have to make a choice. They're both, they're also excellent. And if this is a tie again, we'll have to expand the commission. Next vote. Or flip a coin. Can't be, it can't be a tie with seven. But it was fun.
Madam Mayor, I have four votes for Mr. Cox and three votes for Mr. Marino.
So, Mr. Cox, you'll be appointed to the commission and Mr. Noble. And we really...
I think we still need a motion.
Oh, we have to have a vote. Okay, I'd entertain a motion, councillor Nelson.
Mayor, I would like to nominate that we accept Marlin Christopher Cox and Jed Noble as the new commissioners for planning and zoning.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
I second it.
Motion is second to appoint Mr. Cox, Mr. Noble to the P&amp;Z Commission. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Passes unanimously. Thank you. And thank you, all of you, for applying. And please continue your interest and keep applying because we need you in the city. We need all of you. Now, we'll move on to the Parks, Aquatics, Recreation, and Golf Commission appointment. The partial term that Commissioner Otis Lee Holloway has been serving expires December 31, 2019. Commissioner Holloway has indicated a desire to be appointed to his first full year term. He has been a valuable member with a lot of very good input. Staff recommends the reappointment of Commissioner Otis Lee Holloway for his first full term. Is Mr. Holloway here? Okay, is the liaison to the Park Commission. That's you, councillor Mello Keener.
I recommend that we reappoint Commissioner Otis Lee Holloway for a full term.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion, a second to appoint, reappoint Commissioner Lee Holloway for his first full term. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Passes unanimously. Transit Advisory Commission reappointment. The terms of Transit Advisory Commission Chairperson Dr. Fred Gilbert and Commissioner Sari Tabbert will expire December 31, 2019. Dr. Gilbert expressed a desire to be reappointed. Ms. Tabbert did not, and therefore, her position will become vacant. At its last quarterly meeting, the commission voted to recommend the council reappoint Dr. Gilbert to a third term. This reappointment will require a supermajority vote of the common council. No new applications for appointment have been received. Staff recommends reappointment of Dr. Fred Gilbert to a third term on the commission. Vice Mayor, I think you're the liaison. Don't see Dr., I don't see...
Not this year, I'm not. Mayor, I am.
Oh, you are. Transit Advisory.
Once again, Dr. Gilbert is doing a good job on that commission as well as all the commission members. In fact, once again, how can we, we can't say enough to thank all those who serve on our commissions. I motion that we accept Dr. Fred Gilbert's reappointment to this commission.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second to reappoint Dr. Gilbert. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Passes unanimously. So, we have a open commission seat. Is that correct? Or, okay, there's an open commission seat. So, please apply, people. Next order of business is call to the public. Comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. And at this time, we have one person signed up to address the council. Oh, wait, we have no one signed up for call to the public. That's actually an agenda item. So, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the council during call to the public? And so, we will move on. Consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. So, at this time, are there items that any council member would like to remove from the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to remove item E, please.
Item E? Okay. I would like to remove items B and G. So, if there are no other items, I would entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda or approve the consent agenda with the exceptions of items B, E, and G.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus items B, E, and G.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion, a second to approve the consent agenda with the exceptions of B, E, and G. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Passes unanimously. Okay, item B. Approval of Resolution Number 5251 Water Service to Unsubdivided Parcels 32106081, 32106023, and 32106024, Engineering 19-0092. Mr. Paul Durr of Adams Construction has submitted this request for water service to unsubdivided parcels of those numbers for a veterans' housing development off of Jackson Street. The properties are all zoned C2HMR and cover approximately 6.75 acres collectively. The Municipal Utility Commission reviewed this request at their November 25, 2019 meeting and voted 4-0 to recommend approval of water service. Staff recommends approval of this water service request, subject to the conditions that water and sewer extensions be made in accordance with utility regulations and that fire hydrants be installed as required by the fire department. Mr. Henry, thank you for coming up. Actually, I really don't have so much a question as a comment. If I understand this, this is the veterans' villas that are going to be about 49 units for veterans and targeted, perhaps homeless veterans in particular?
Madam Mayor and council, that is correct. This is for a 49-unit veterans' housing complex. They're going to have an office and a maintenance building on that 6.75-acre property there off of Jackson Street.
And they have a property manager on site? Is that what that is entailed?
Yes, I understand there's going to be an office building that'll have some sort of office manager.
Okay. Well, the reason I took this off the agenda really was to confirm that, but also to really inform the public of this really good news because we are a community that truly has, works hard for our veterans. But this is going to be such an addition to support getting homeless veterans housed. And I'm really happy to see it moving forward. And do we have any idea of when construction might begin?
I know there's been building plans submitted. I believe they're still being reviewed at this point.
Okay.
So, hopefully, we should see some construction after the first of the year.
Excellent. That will be nice to have in 2020. Thank you. So, with that, I will go ahead and make a motion to approve Resolution 5251 for water service to these unsubdivided parcels.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. Item E, Kingman Industrial Park Land Sale. Parcel, two, I, I, N, I, I'm not sure if that's Roman numerals or not. Site, .34 acres, improvements, 1221 metal building, was auctioned at December 4 at 3:00 p.m. at the appraised value of $40,000. There is one qualified and winning bidder, One Call Staffing LLC, and staff recommends approval. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I pulled this item simply to, one, just call out that this is the city of Kingman's fourth land sale in just over, is it 18 months we've been in operations? Fourth land sale. That's really good. And the other thing I'd like to do is, and I've done it with the past three, is I just want to, I know he's in the audience, just say thank you to One Call Staffing for continuing your investment in Kingman and calling it home. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Make a motion to approve item E.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second to approve item E, Kingman Industrial Park Land Sale. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. And finally, item G, Street Lighting LED Upgrades. The attached quote is for consideration of purchasing LED streetlights to replace high-energy-use fixtures. If approved, this will be the second phase of upgrades and will bring the total replacements number to over 300 fixtures. The proposal is only for the purchase of fixtures and the installation will be completed by the Streets Division. Staff recommends approval. Good evening, Mr. Plante.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council.
I called this one out because I just wanted to ask a question because when I was going through this discussion with someone, they mentioned our dark sky policy. Or did we, they asked, do we have a dark sky policy? And so, I looked at our ordinances and saw we had things related to the shielding of these lights and whatnot. And I just wanted to make sure that these streetlights that we're installing meet that criteria, that they, they don't break that horizontal plane in their light.
These lights do. And we talked about the color gradient on it. There are other places like Flagstaff that have a very orange, very distinct streetlight. The lights we have do meet our ordinances. They don't meet like Flagstaff. I talked to the rep about that sort of situation. And the area that we are using these on, we've actually started some of the replacements on Stockton Hill. So, we're doing our major arterials first. And the sales rep at that time said he wouldn't recommend that style light for those roadways just because of the safety aspect of it. In short, it does meet the current ordinance that we do have here in Kingman.
Is there any capacity for it to tear down during the night? For example, be bright for the high usage times, but then as we get closer to midnight or whatever, that it could actually be a softer light?
So, these lights in particular, I'm actually kind of excited about this. I guess I'm glad you pulled it off the agenda at this point. So, these have a specific type of socket for a photocell. Now, what we're installing, again, the, where we're going with these, the roadways and the amount of traffic they see across the nighttime hours, the rep recommended not dimming these. But these lights with future upgrades to other systems, you know, our actual control cabinets and some things, we actually could make these dimmable. But there's some other functionality that we can add into them with this specific socket. Noise detection, air quality monitoring, rain gauges, all kinds of stuff are available in these. So, they're actually, we won't be utilizing that technology now, but what we are trying to achieve was actually is to set up now for it so we don't have to come back and make upgrades later. And if we were to go that way, these, they use what they call a node and they plug into this seven-pin socket and all those nodes actually communicate to one another. And so, you would take that actually back to a central point where you would have a, either a wireless cell system or a hard-line phone system that would give you connectivity as well.
So, you could program it to dim it?
Correct.
So, Mayor, just one, I would, I would want to just say one thing with street lighting and dimming lights and, and that is that, from a safety aspect, and I will just say that light tends to chase away bad things. And I know there's a lot of people who like the dark sky programs, but that creates issues for our police department and public safety in general. And in some of those places, like Stockton Hill Road, major... And in some of those places, like Stockton Hill Road, major corridors where there are a lot of businesses, shining a little bit of extra light during the evening and night actually is beneficial to community safety in a lot of different ways. So, as we look at dark sky programs, it's something that is a good thing and it also has its cons as well, so.
Well, that's a very good point, but I think it's like many things. Once you lose it, you don't get it back. And so, I'm glad that we're paying attention to purchasing things that can be modified in the future if that is what is wanted because there are people that really do value that and really do use our skies for sky watching. And so, thank you very much. Really, that was my question, but we do meet our ordinances.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, then I will make a motion that we approve Item G. Street Lighting LED Upgrades.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it, motion passes unanimously. We have no old business, so we'll move on to new business. Item A. Facade Improvement Program. The purpose of the facade improvement program is to improve the appearance of the facade, the street-facing exteriors of commercial structures within downtown Kingman. The program's mission is to stimulate revitalization and private sector capital investment by proactively addressing deteriorating property conditions and encouraging improvements which increase economic vitality. Staff recommends approval. Good evening, Ms. Shaver.
Good evening and Merry Christmas if I don't see you beforehand.
Merry Christmas.
So, since the last time we visited, we did a work session on facade improvement program, and then we did go back to meet with the Historic Preservation Commission and our Development Remit Committee and get some additional input on our initial draft. And so, this is a really short summarized presentation here. And basically, as we know, the facade improvement program, we're trying to make our downtown buildings more attractive and get more businesses to participate and bring people downtown to come and visit the businesses and stay a little longer while they're there. That's the purpose of the program. And then I did include some, even though this is not downtown business, this is some improvements that have happened in our area and some before and afters because before I had some pictures of places somewhere else. I said, "Well, let's show some from this downtown area." So, again, some of the benefits, attract more customers, increase sales, improve the overall look. The boundary that we have, right now I placed it, and this is what I have in the packet. We have this whole area down Beale Street, Andy Devine, from First to Sixth Street, kind of complimentary to our Parklet Pellet program, which is Second to Sixth and down Beale Street. So, this is what we're planning on doing for the first year. And I think that answered your question, Council Staley, about the in-between streets here, so that all these streets would be a part of the program. Eligible improvements include, this is not the total list, I just put a few here just to remind everyone what they were, and that includes exterior painting, plants, landscaping, awnings, signs, business signs, and facade and display window lighting. The application and funds, there is 20,000 currently budgeted. The city will match the applicant funds 2080. Fundings will be awarded on a first come for third. Applications will be reviewed monthly, and the applications will be available on January 1 on the City of Kingman's website. At the Historic Preservation Commission, we went to in November. The few things that we did there with the recommendations is we did form a subcommittee to review the colors. I remember initially we discussed a color palette, but at this time, it was best that we form a committee of three just to review all colors coming in. Additional comment and feedback was related to if there was improvements that required building permit. Initially, I had all improvements would require a licensed contractor, but now it's if we require one through a building permit process, then we'll need a licensed contractor. So, that was added to it. If we need any encroachment permits for, say, an awning, that would be a part of it. Otherwise, also being aware of the historic commercial buildings, if anybody's going to do a facade improvement on one, to, you know, contact the state office prior to doing so, and then we would discuss that with them as well. Really, that's the summarized version of the application I gave to you in the packet. If you have any questions, we're looking forward to moving forward with this project along with Parklets Pellets on January 1. So, if you have any questions for me? Are there any questions?
I had one question. First of all, I'm very excited about this program, and I'd asked this before, and I'm going to ask it again. One of the allowable improvements is paint, and a mural is just a bunch of different kinds of paint. I noticed in our work session that our staff used the mural that the Kingman Main Street folks used, and when I see pictures of downtown these days, I see really people take pictures of two main things, our arch and that mural. If I understand it right, that mural costs, I think, about $5,000, and so if we allow painting of murals to be a part of this program, I think it would allow a private business owner to bring their private capital investment, to stack it maybe and partner with Kingman Main Street if they want to do a little funding as well on top of this program. I think that it would give more visual context to downtown. It would give people more photo opportunities, which is kind of what we're after. We want to put out as many positive breadcrumbs out on the internet to all lead back to Kingman. And I'm glad to see that there's, you know, as a part of the application process, you have to submit site plan, you have to say, "Here's exactly what I'm going to do. Here's the proposed facade renovation," and it would go in front of this group, this panel, and guard against things that are maybe distasteful, right? Green and orange buildings or a mural that maybe wouldn't fit into the fabric. So, hopefully, that we can move forward with that and that be allowed.
Vice Mayor, sorry about that. I can definitely include that in here. I know when I was listing out eligible improvements, and then I did just put a snapshot here. I was definitely focusing initially on the basics like paint.
Sure.
Door, windows, so I'm sure we can entertain and put that into the application.
Yeah, but I mean, if you look at, murals can actually be, if you're a smart business owner, you can put in a mural on your building that's going to attract traffic. I don't know if you've ever been to Austin Road Places where they have the, or Nashville where they have all the wings, and people take pictures in front of the wings, and I mean, it won't probably be that, but I mean, if you're smart, you could really leverage that.
So, just to answer your question, Mayor, Vice Mayor, what we anticipate doing is another program that deals with signs and community downtown art. And one of the things that we would like to do is have a program that encourages exactly what you're talking about, where we're looking at funding better signage in our downtown as well as art projects, whether it's a statue or whether it's a mural like we took part in, really see those as an opportunity, as you indicated, to draw people downtown. As far as facade goes, we'd like to keep the downtown art and signs separate. That would be another program that we would introduce. Give it a funding source and have that be something that stands separate from just the facade improvements. I haven't had a chance to talk to Sylvia about that, but signage and art takes a little bit more, I think, effort, and I think a proper downtown art program as well as sign program, we would be able to fund and encourage people to be able to do that. So, I completely agree with you, just to envision that being another program. So, we'd have a Parklets program, we'd have a facade program, and we'd have an arts and sign program, so.
Not to disagree with you, but I think that the difference I see, you mentioned signage and painted signs, those aren't allowed in this program, and I like that. We don't want painted signs. But what we're talking about here is a lot of the public art, or most of the public art that you see, a sculpture, a painting, it's typically located within the public realm, and the City of Kingman operates the public realm. That mural is on private property, and we're talking about the difference between private property and what we do in the public realm. What we do in the public realm, that's great, but if somebody wants to, as a part of their marketing plan or their business, create something that's visually appealing, I mean, the Kingman Center for the Arts, I mean, you've seen the Bobcat and the Cactus, you've got the other murals, I mean, there's a few murals downtown, and that's all on private property. And I sort of start to have a problem with the city trying to tell people what to do with their private property.
I apologize. My suggestion is not to be telling people what to do, it's to be creating a grant program that would recognize exactly that specific pieces of the downtown development on public or on private property. So, it would just be a sign, whether it's a business sign and, you know, hang out your shingle, and this is what we hope your shingle looks like, or you want a mural on the side of your building, submit that and participate in this other art program. So, I don't disagree with you. I don't necessarily want to get into defining art, but I'm not exactly sure that this group that we have to determine historic palette is the group that we want deciding on what a mural in the downtown should look like. Murals and signage are a little bit more complicated, and who looks, who determines that, you know, what is art and what is not? I think we have to, like I said, I thought that was something we'd tackle in a different program. So, it's completely up to the council. If you want to include murals, it's fine by me.
I'd like to include murals. Obviously, anything that is extremely distasteful, or, I mean, if we all just interject some common sense, and you still, you provide that flexibility to the private business owner to put something on their private building, I don't think that really needs a separate program. I mean, maybe for public art, and that's a whole different ballgame, you know, just working from, in Tucson, we had a public art program where you had to do, 1% of the design and construction budget had to be dedicated to some sort of incorporation of public art, and they had this whole separate panel of public artists, and it was a huge production. And all this stuff went into the public realm, right? This is, I see it as a little different. I see it as a part of somebody's building that they've purchased with private funds, and as long as it's not super distasteful, either colors or some sort of public art, if they want to partner with Main Street to put in another, something there for tourists to take pictures of, I think that should be allowed. That's just my opinion.
Were there other comments?
Vice Mayor.
Council Watkins.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor, just to clarify too, because I know billboards, for example, are not on this, are on the ineligible improvements. When you're talking murals, you're talking with no advertising referring to that business that it's on, correct? In other words, art is one thing, but if they start to put any kind of advertising that refers to that building and their business, then we have to be careful there. So, that's why I want to clarify. I think I understand what you're talking about, but...
Here's what I think. So, we already have, we have a mural on the Garlic Clove. Did they get the city's permission? No. We have got the mural that everybody takes a fillet of that we used in the work session. We've got the Center for the Arts. They have their Bobcat and the Cactus and the Hummingbird. They didn't ask us for permission. And those are great. They're different, they're all varied, they're all different, right? But it was left to the private sector to do those things on private buildings, right? That's kind of what I'm talking about. No, not painting a billboard by any means.
Well, no, and I mean, anything, even if it was a mural, as long as there's nothing on it referring to any kind of advertising to that business, and then, and murals are great.
If it would confuse the sign code, or I mean, what I'm saying is just have this review board that we're going to have, just use a little common sense, right? They're going to be familiar with our sign code, they're going to be familiar with all the stuff that's already on the books. Whatever they propose has to comply with all that, right? I mean, I know that the sign code says you can't have signs that are too big, right? So, I mean, if they want a huge mural and it's not going to, and it's a sign, it'd be bigger than the sign code, guess what? Sorry, we can't approve that, right? Because it violates the sign code. But something like the current murals that we have downtown, those would be allowable. The distinction being public art being in the public realm and private businesses doing something with, having a little bit of a creative freedom, not green and orange buildings, but something that would be no more regular than the current murals that we have already.
Councilman Watkins.
Counselor.
May I clarify? Excuse me, sorry. On the point that you had for if there was a painting like the mural and it did have the business name in it, then it would require a sign permit, so then you're walking down the business sign road.
Correct.
So, I did want to clarify that you asked.
And that's why I wanted to bring it up. I just want to throw that out there to clarify, to make sure we're all on the same page.
Okay. Okay. Councilor Staley.
Thank you. Of course, I'm really excited to see this on the agenda, something that I've been asking for, for a couple of years now, and it's always a topic at the Main Street conferences only because it's been so successful in other communities. And while in this first round, it's not a very large program when we talk about how much we're investing into the facade program. It may help four or five businesses, but what they always talk about at Main Street is that it really just kind of starts, it starts something, and then you see other businesses jumping in to fix up their facades, even if they don't have the grant or the grant has already been spent for that year. So, it really does catch on, and it's a good thing for the entire community, and it shows that it improves property values and that kind of thing. So, I'm very excited to see this in line with what Councilman Lincolnfelter is talking about, excuse me, Vice Mayor Lincolnfelter. You know, this is really just six months right now of a program, right? Because it'll go up in the next budget to see if we want to fund it again, and so we'll really know a lot about whether it will work or not in a couple of months. So, I would rather leave it open and see if there is an interest from the business community to do a mural. It has to go through the commission for approval and that kind of thing. So, I'd almost like to have less restrictions and see where it goes and then come back and look at it when we go to fund it again next year. The other thing I'd like to ask is, when I did attend a session at this last Main Street, and one of the things that helped make the program successful in the town that was being featured was they did have a community meeting, an information meeting, as soon as the program rolled out, where they could sort of set expectations and talk about really what the goal of the city was and what helps storefronts improve. I know that Main Street does have somebody, a designer, who's willing to help the businesses that maybe don't have the design eye, and she would also help in the meeting if you'd like, but that would probably be a good idea for the city is just to hold a meeting for the property owners to give them an idea of how the program works and what we're hoping to happen, and then even refer them to a designer if they'd like to see that.
Easily done.
Thank you. And thank you. So, thank you very much for putting this together.
Other comments? Councilor Wade?
Just a quick comment. I really do like this program. I, on the other hand, I sort of like to err on the side of caution, and when it comes to more restriction versus less restriction, I think it's easier to go backwards, to start out with defined criteria, and then, you know, if it's too restrictive, maybe, you know, scale it back when we go back to reviewing it. And I think, I think I understand Manager Foggan's perspective because I feel like with respect to being on, like, for example, if I were on the committee to look at, you know, these projects, I feel like I'd be perfect for the committee to determine whether or not something, you know, is up to the code or the standards that we put out, but I know nothing about art. So, I feel like I'd be perfect for, not that I'm, you know, I do not want to be on this committee, but I certainly don't want to be on the committee, but I feel like I would be perfect for it in that I'd be looking for specific criteria, whereas if the criteria included, you know, art, I wouldn't know anything about it. So I, and I mean, and that's not to say, so I love the murals that we have out there. I mean, I just wouldn't be able to determine, like, if there were two pieces of art, which one is better? I mean, that obviously sounds pretty basic because I just don't know. But that's, that's what I'm getting at, is I, I feel like the committee, the intent of the committee is to be, you know, these people who determine what would work with the code and the regulations and the restrictions, but I, I'm not sure that they're the best to determine what would constitute, you know, something that, you know, works in terms of art. Is that, does that make any sense? Is that kind of what you were referring to, Manager Foggan?
Exactly.
Well said. Okay, Counselor Nelson.
I'm, I'm with Councilman Wade on this. I think that, that having the two split up a little bit and giving, giving the right to, the, the, the private property owners have a right to do anything to their property, but we have ended up with a green and orange building and some really ugly things. So this is a good opportunity for them to come to us and say, this is what my plan is. And we say, obviously, 99% of the time it's going to be yes, but there might be that 1% of the time that we want some control and we want to be able to say no to some things. So I like Councilman Wade's approach and Manager Foggan, I think it's a good idea.
And I would only say that if you ask 10 people about a piece of art, you're probably going to get 10 different responses because art is a very personal thing. And I don't think that it should be up to three people to say what is good art or bad art. I think that that's kind of what makes it special, that it's all unique. And, and obviously, this committee would have to turn down anything that is, you know, blatantly disrespectful or, or bad taste, green and orange buildings. The city doesn't want to participate in any of those things. But I just thought it would present another opportunity for a private business owner to not only stack this program with their private capital investment and maybe some investment from the Kingman Main Street, provide some, some other visual material that our staff can use for presentations instead of the same mural all the time. But, you know, if you want to tell private people what to do, that's fine.
I have one person signing to speak. I'll just use the experience that I've had with art murals over several summers. I found that art does, is in the eye of the beholder, but you can pretty well tell at the end of the day who's done a art piece and where you have to go in and say, oh, we got to fix it. And, and it is, it's, it's dependent not just on the idea, but on the execution, obviously. I think we have six months, as you said. I would like to see if there's, how much interest there is. I know there's interest in murals and I know people are doing wonderful murals, but I'd like to kind of see how much interest there is in all of these other elements that are in the facade program, knowing that we could expand it to murals. But I'm also interested in an art program, which I would like to have discussed at the, I don't want to throw that baby out with the bathwater saying we've already handled it.
I promise we won't.
Good, good. So those are my thoughts. And we have, thank you, Sylvia. We have one person signed up to speak to this. Come forward, Paul Gaines, and take, take your comments. Take your comments.
Very brief. Madam Mayor and Vice Mayor Lincolnfelter, my name is Paul Gaines and I'm a founding member, one of the founding members of the Kingman Main Street. And I was also the committee chair of this very popular mural we're talking about now. And I had no idea most of the conversation was going to be about murals, which is kind of cool, but I just assumed it was going to be about getting rid of some nasty looking awnings, which I think we really should do. But I can't speak for everybody in Kingman Main Street, but I hope that all of them would be very much for this program and hope to see it continue and be a little shot in the arm to any downtown businesses that were on the fence, maybe, and need a little bit of financial help to get their facades going and look a little bit nicer. And that's all I have to say. And Merry Christmas to everybody.
And Merry Christmas. Thank you. Okay. Well, this was a really good discussion. And so now we need to either discuss further or have a motion on the facade improvement program.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the facade improvement program.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
I second it.
Motion is second to approve the facade improvement program. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Eyes have it. Motion carries unanimously. Next order, next order of business is a classification change. To streamline and provide a more efficient customer service experience, planning and zoning and building and life safety will be combined to form Community Development Services, a division under the Kingman Fire Department. This division will be under the direction of our building official. The department is not requesting a new position, but only to reclassify the building official to a job title and salary grade consistent with the increased requirements and responsibilities of the new role. Following an analysis by Human Resources, it is recommended to reclassify building official salary grade 218 to a new classification, Community Development Manager, salary grade 225, effective on January 1st, 2020. Staff recommends approval. Is this yours, Manager Foggan?
It is. Thank you. We bring this to you in an effort to really do two things. One is to free up more of our Economic Development Director's time to spend more time on economic development. He, since being made the Economic Development Director, has been handed a number of divisions. And as we see, as you saw from his presentation, there is a lot of work that has been done and needs to continue to be done by our economic development team. And one of the places where, in talking with Gary, that we felt like we could free up more of his time was what, the time that he was spending with planning, which is, is not necessarily in, in Gary's wheelhouse. He has been extremely good with planning, but in looking and evaluating our existing team members, we were fortunate to be able to hire Chris Young as our, as our building official. Chris comes to us with great experience in building and planning. And so we have an opportunity where we have a great team member who I think we can basically hand or combine the inspections with the planning and end up with pretty much a seamless operation in, and then free up Gary's time to do more ED, airport and tourism things. And so that's really what, what Chris will be doing is assuming the more traditional role. It's actually pretty similar in a lot of communities where you have a community development director. Chris is not going to, we're not going to add another director position. We've already got a, a large number of directors. So that's why the title is Community Development Manager. Just with the relationship that has been established with inspections, that falls under the Fire Department. So our, it's a little bit unique in that it's not a director position, it's a manager position. But we've got a, we've got a great team member with extremely good experience. And so it gave us that opportunity, like I said, to free up Gary's time and have someone who can speak planning and zoning as well as inspection. And those go together so well because it's kind of like you, you birth the, the baby with the, you know, the, the creation of a subdivision. You work through that process all the way through until the houses are built. And so that's why you usually see those departments combined. And so that's, that's what we have for you tonight, so.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Are there questions or comments? Well, I think you sold that well. We're very thankful to have Chris Young in the city and to have his expertise and to, of course, no good deeds go unpunished and he's done a great job, so.
That's right. When you do, when you do extra good work, you get more work.
That's right, that's right.
But Chris really has been a valuable team member and it's, it's wonderful to have been able to attract him to, to our organization. And, and, you know, when you have stars in your organization, it gives you options. And that's, that's wonderful to have, so appreciate that.
I will mention that we had a pretty robust discussion about this, Manager Foggan and I, because this organizational structure move did not seem intuitively obvious to me. I think that's exactly the words I used in, but, and also because planning has, we're planning so many things and general plans and all the facets of it, that I really wanted to understand where, where this move was coming from. And I, I feel comfortable that we are, we can support this. I think in the fullness of time, we'll have to, we'll, we'll reexamine this again and as we grow our city and, and have more resources perhaps to examine this. So with that, I would entertain a motion on the classification change to combine planning and zoning and building and life safety into a Community Development Services Division and reclassify the building official to a job title and grade salary of two, grade 225 from grade 218. That's a long motion. You don't have to say it again.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to do those things. And all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Eyes have it. Motion carries unanimously. Next order of business is, are the department reports. Do we have any tonight, Manager Foggan?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Then announcements by mayor, council member, city manager, limited to announcements, board and commission liaison reports, availability and attendance at conferences and seminars. Manager Foggan?
Thank you, Mayor. First thing I want to do is just remind the council and the community of our push for a complete count for 2020 census is one of our goals and one of our efforts was to make sure that this was publicly talked about. So this is every other week, we're taking that as an opportunity to talk about the census and just remind people that we are, again, inviting any civic groups or any groups that would like to hear more about our census efforts and why they should participate in the census. We are putting that invitation out there. We have completed our effort to educate our employees. We've made it to all of the different departments and made presentations to all of the departments with regards to the importance of the census and how we need our team members out there talking to their families, friends and neighbors about the complete count and what it is and what it is not. And that has been very successful. We've had a number of, of our team members say that they weren't aware of how important it was to the city and they were certainly going to be ambassadors of a complete count for us, which is what our goal was. And then I also want to just remind everybody that we're in the process of a Parks Master Plan, which we're very excited about. There is going to be a number of focus groups and community outreach efforts and we would encourage those people that are interested in parks and trails and recreation to look for those. There are stakeholders that are being invited to participate in the focus groups directly and that, those are going to be very important discussions. The one thing for the council is that there's going to be individual stakeholder interviews. If you've not responded, I think you've been emailed and/or you will be called as well to participate. Everybody's voice is needed and very much welcome as far as this very important master plan. And so if you would please contact the folks that are doing this, Green Spaces, I believe, is the consultant, and get that scheduled and appreciate it. For the community, there's going to be a number of opportunities to participate as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Watkins.
Thank you, Mayor. Of, of course, I have nothing. I don't have anything tonight, but just to wish everybody Merry Christmas and Happy New Year and, of course, safe travel during the holidays.
Thank you. Counselor Wade.
Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of the Kingman chapter of Sleep in Heavenly Peace, which is a nonprofit organization that builds beds for kids, I just wanted to thank K R M C for sponsoring our, our bed build last Saturday and to all of the volunteers that showed up and, and spent several hours sanding and cutting and staining these beds for these kids in Kingman who, who need beds. I wanted to thank other organizations like the Venture Club, who, who contributed, individual members from the Mojave County Treasurer's Office, the Kingman Quilters Guild, who donated several comfort quilts to our organization that we could give with the beds. PetSmart donated a bunch of little, little toys that we put on the beds and it just made these kids so happy. We, we were able to deliver several beds. We have many beds that we are planning on delivering in the next couple of weeks and months. I wanted to thank the Arizona Furniture Store and Mattress Store for their donation of, of mattresses for us and, and just everybody who, just the community just got out and got their hands dirty and, and lungs full of sawdust. It was just so good to see everyone coming together to put these beds together for these children who, who really, really needed it. So I, I wanted to thank everybody.
Counselor Ms. Staley.
I just have a couple of things. Last week, we met for the third time to work on the Airport Master Plan and there was also a, a public community meeting. And just a, a couple of exciting things that came out of this last week's meeting was talk about a planned airport museum. And I know, because I know a lot of people have missed the, the museum that we used to have out at the airport, but, but the talks are very exciting because they'll be even better than the last one. And the other thing was the opportunities for overflow business from the Las Vegas area. There are several airports in Las Vegas that are reaching capacity and, as you know, there's a new stadium being built. So Kingman is just ready for the opportunities to bring in those businesses. And then I, there was also a, a monthly Main Street meeting and we had the cookie crawl this Saturday, which sold out over 300 passports were sold. There's so much interest in our downtown and so it's really great to see so many people coming together for the holidays and doing the cookie crawl and visiting the downtown businesses. I also just wanted to let everybody know that a new, a new president was elected of Kingman Main Street and that is Sarah Ferry. So if anyone has any questions or wants to connect with Main Street, Sarah Ferry is the person to see. And that is it.
Thank you. Counselor Nelson?
I have nothing. Just Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Okay. Counselor Melo Keener?
Just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. I'm under the weather, sorry, but thank you. It's been great working with everybody and looking forward to the, the next year.
Vice Mayor?
Nothing this evening, Madam Mayor. Also Merry Christmas to everybody and we'll see you next year.
Again, as always, I want to thank the staff for the great work that's being done. Attended the master, Airport Master Plan meetings and our future out there looks very prom, so promising. I also, the, the, attended the Phoenix Mojave County Water Sustainability Committee meeting. And I'm glad to report that that dialogue is very, very rich. We're getting a lot of information and discussing data collection and best practices for water conservation and, and sustainability, basically, reclamation. And I'm expecting that we may be able to even propose some legislative items in 2020. I'm hoping that will be the case. Also went to KAMA today and there was a happy, happy news there on their manufacturing day. We had over, we had 10 employers out at the industrial park open up their doors to our high school students and they had over 50 students come in and have interest and they were across the board spectrum of classes and types of things they were studying, but they wanted to know more about manufacturing. And so they were very proud of their results. And so I think also tonight, I'd like to take just a minute, and, and this is, we've lost- a member of our our team, our our community that helps downtown and all the efforts that go on down there with the loss of Ken Conaway. And Jean Kirkham is here, and he and Ken are the Route 66 chilling on bill doers. They make it happen. And it was a surprise, and it was a loss, and I just want to send condolences on all of our behalf to his family and friends. We will miss him. And beyond that, I I'd just like to also wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a very blessed holiday season and New Year. And with that, we know, no, no, we have one more item. Council requests for future work session agenda items under calendar adjustments. We have none. I would entertain a call for adjournment.
I move we adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Second. Motion is second. All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned.